Ready to get started, if you would please. And that's one of our.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, somebody wants to go in on them. If I was like, well, that's my national flag, I'm gonna do that.
Yeah, fight all.
All right. Is this thing live? Everybody here all right back there?
We're live.
We have a speaker here tonight.
And you can't just lay them there if you want to.
You can?
Yeah, because they are quite hard.
Okay. Everybody here okay? As usual, first thing up, we do have a little window of opportunity here for anybody that has anything that's not on the agenda. Comment or question that you'd like to ask or a comment you'd like to make, now's the time to do that.
I just want to remind you, we have an RDA meeting Wednesday morning at 10 o'clock at Midbrook Science Park. 10 o'clock, not 10:30, 10 o'clock.
10 o'clock. Thank you very much.
Same room?
Same place?
Same room.
I assume.
Okay. Anybody else? All right, we'll move right into the agenda, and the first thing on the agenda is the Second Amendment resolution. There has been a resolution prepared. And I think some of the comments are floating around there. So for the ones that don't have one, this is a resolution supporting the protection of the rights under the Second Amendment of the United States Constitution and Article One, Section 32 of the Indiana Constitution. Whereas the Board of Commissioners of Fort Scott County is the executive body. Fort Scott County pursuant to Indiana Code 36, two, 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 two. And whereas each member of the Board of Commissioners is required to take an oath of office prior to the assumption of duties as county commissioner. And whereas the oath of office requires each member of the Board of Commissioners to swear to support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Indiana faithfully, impartially, and diligently discharge the duties of thy office of county commissioner for county of Scott according to law. And whereas the Second Amendment of the United States Constitution states, "A well-regulated militia being necessary for the security of a free state, the right of the people to keep and bear arms shall not be infringed." And whereas Article One, Section 32 of the Indiana Constitution states, "The people shall have the right to bear arms for the defense of themselves and the state." Whereas each member of the Board of Commissioners maintains a strong commitment of rights of Scott County residents to keep and bear arms. Whereas each member of the Board of Commissioners opposes the adoption of laws, ordinance, rules, regulations, and other similar restrictions intended to limit or infringe upon the constitutional rights of Scott County residents to keep and bear arms as guaranteed by the Second Amendment of the United States Constitution and Article One, Section 32 of the Indiana Constitution. It is therefore resolved by the Board of Commissioners for Scott County, Indiana, that the following resolution is hereby adopted. One, the Board of Commissioners declare Scott County, State of Indiana, to be a defender of the Second Amendment rights. Two, the Board of Commissioners support and intend to protect the rights granted to Scott County residents under the Scott Second Amendment of the United States Constitution and Article One, Section 32 of the Indiana Constitution. And three, the Board of Commissioners express the intention to oppose and prevent the expenditure of Scott County public funds for purposes of serving to promote the unconstitutional infringement upon each Scott County citizen's right to keep and bear arms. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners for Scott County, State of Indiana, being the appropriate executive body, do hereby approve the resolution on the act of this body on this day, March 2020. And if this is adopted, it will be adopted on this day. You guys have had a chance to look, a chance to read. What's your pleasure?
I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution.
We have a motion to adopt the resolution, do I have a second?
Yeah, I'll say it.
I will make that unanimous, and on this day of March, we will adopt this resolution. And this one will sign, do you want this?
Yeah. First of all, you didn't ask for any input from the public here.
We had input from the public at the last meeting, I thought we understood.
Yeah, some of us couldn't get in there at the last meeting. There was not room for us to get in. I'd like to just make one little point before you go ahead and sign that. If you read the Second Amendment, there are two parts of it. The first part says why. The second part says the right of the people to keep and bear arms shall not be infringed. But that first part was because they were dependent upon militias back then. Now we have a standing Army, Navy, Air Force, Marines, and if Trump gets his way, we'll be able to defend ourselves against the Martians with this space force that he's after. But that constitutional amendment was written 200 and some odd years ago.
So was the First Amendment?
I'm not talking about the First Amendment.
It doesn't matter. It was also written 200 years ago.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. But this, this, I understand what your point is, and I appreciate that. I do. But.
All right. And it has been voted made second, and they have been voted, now it is adopted resolution for the Second Amendment resolution here. All right, next up is the Siren Jack renewal date for April 6, 2020, five feet down. Is that done?
That is a date that Michelle coordinated with the state. If that works for you all, that can be the date. She gave me a few alternative dates, if that is not good for you all. She's saying it's five feet down.
That's a Monday, is that right?
I think it should be correct.
Yeah, such a matter. That may be a problem for me. Maybe, maybe, I know if you have a permission plan there. Do you want to?
The tackle list of?
March 16, March 30th, the 31st, April 6th, April 7th.
So only Monday going ahead?
My summer Tuesday, Monday, Tuesday.
Monday, Tuesday.
Seven could probably be open, April 7th.
I didn't answer the question.
Yes, if that'll work, then we'll, that's fine. I'll make it work.
It's all now?
I mean, I can make whatever I do work. And also, she does ask, and she cannot be here tonight, she's asked authorization for Health Department Director to sign provider agreements.
Thanks for coming the last time, or the last meeting, it was very organized, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
So what's she, exactly, exactly, she needs to find this here. She's asking for all the replacements to sign participatory provider agreements on behalf of the Scott County area, Scott County.
She's trying to accommodate her Medicaid claims and generate revenue through those, because she's a program.
Okay, yeah.
And Houston spoke to her and said, you got a blanket authorization so she could get through this process, she could keep signing the documents instead of having you all attend to. So if you so moved, you can do a blanket authorization, and she can continue with the package.
Your motion allowed? Don't make a motion, second, I'll make a unanimous, allow. Okay. Salvability acceptance.
Then, what means do you venture?
Four and seven seconds here.
Okay.
Do you have your motion to approve on that?
I'll make a motion.
Second?
Second.
And I'm unanimous. And second up on that is to retain the services, Kaitlyn and Gray. Do we have your motion to retain their services?
I'll make a motion.
The Dietrich Building Appraisals. I think you guys have copied one, right? Did you put them back in here again tonight?
I've never made that copy, so they.
Okay. I'll give you that one. Okay.
I may have copied a couple of these, or one of them.
Well, I think, I think what we recovered. You know, that there is two, probably, there's a two, three down.
Two.
And so they averaged them too, and that's basically, and that's correct.
Yeah. That's what we need.
So I think that's one. Maybe you can look that over and come back. Average average.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I just noted.
Put that back, you know, put that back on for that time.
Well, what I'll do.
But when we come back, and my discussion, I noticed about that, because people keep cheating. You know, we're on those, not just laughing or anything. I'm okay with that all. How long are we waiting for?
It is what it is, I mean, if you wanted to proceed, if, 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 I'm not talking to you guys at all. If the next step is to, something which you gotta, you gotta get the council involved in that process, of course. So even though you don't have that number today, you can have it before they're having a meeting. If you wanted to go ahead and talk about letting them look at it, talk about it. But that's, that's kind of one of the next steps.
Well, I think we're the first step, and then the next step, if you're correct, yeah.
But I'm saying you can take the step to give it to the council, though we, we know we have those numbers.
Yeah. Well, I didn't plan on that tonight.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, we knew what everybody wants, but my goal is just to get it, get it in a discussion stage and get, I don't want to get month after month, and I don't have the judges, and it's probably been a year now.
I thought, and I thought I had emailed, if I haven't done it, but also I would email to you, all three of you guys, the pages or the page that has the numbers on it. So you can at least have that number, supposed to, and I thought I'd done.
I think I've got, yeah, I think I got that, I think it definitely was decided.
So you got the numbers available to you.
Okay.
I think.
Yeah, I'd just like to get moving on, we need to do it, we don't, we don't work on them later.
Well, my whole thing within, I think it's a first, I'm upset if it. I'm not, I'm not providing the building, so I think parking is something that is crucial for any building we own, and there's no parking there. And plus, I don't want to get, get into the county owning some more property. I mean, we own the John Jones, the old John Jones building, and there's plenty of room out there that we can move 4H out there, or eventually move 911 and EMA out there. And that would open up their building over here for somebody else that would need an office space. But I, I thought if it was tonight or next week or anything else, it'd be, no. I know, I know what it costs to build it or remodel out of John Jones, because I already asked the contractor, it's $220,000. So if we're buying a building for 160 and putting 100 into it, make it what we need over here without any parking, I think it's a burn.
I would be in favor if Bob would be able to come up with somebody to, because I think before we move on, I think we need paperwork to say immediately what's going on. They're kind of all flying, I think, on our own investments, what we're doing here for John Jones. Anywhere else, get some paperwork, and I'd like for you to do that. I want to be nonparticiple.
Well, I have, I have what the past director of 4H at TME give me a list of what her wants for the 4H. And I have that, I sent it to a company that we've used multiple times, and they came back with a, you know, a quote of, what he said, $220,000 to build what they want. And that's taking two bays out there and right behind the Health Department and creating a facility for 4H. So I, you know, as far as saying the numbers, I had the numbers, and I have the.
Well, I just want, I'd like to have an inventory. And nothing is there, I mean, I'd like to have something also addressing over here, what we might have to remodel. And the office. I hate to spend money, but I think the only way we can go further than losing here is to get some numbers.
And I think, I'd like also to say on that, I'd like to know who's going to be involved.
I'll send you one.
All right, moving on, memorandum of understanding for the 911, North Carolina 911, or, that was that.
Do I really need that?
No.
Thank you. This is our standard every year, mutual, our new line of understanding to the medical director for EMD practices. It's Dr. Crossdale, he's also the medical director for EMS, so all of us, and Dr. Byer, and just about everybody else. It keeps our policies, and everybody in the same sheet of music.
Do you have a motion?
I do.
Second?
I'll say it.
That's pretty easy one.
Favorite, it's pretty standard.
And to try to go, since you're sitting here now, to go back to what we were just talking about with Indian space, for, you know, magistrate or whatever. I know you and I talked, and you said that if you had to, you could move your EMA out of the basement and put in front office space of your, of the 911 center temporarily.
Correct, we could relocate to that front office space where EMA is. But we can work on that until we, from this basis issue, that room is partially used, barely used. It wouldn't be the best room for long term, but if we need to, we can be flexible and work on that.
Before, yeah, before we jump, before we jump into this, okay, there's something I'll bring up. You're certainly involved here, and I'm just thinking. I kind of feel like it maybe, based off the past, based off where things are today, I think that the EMA, I think the commissioners, I think probably the Health Department, maybe schools, maybe fire departments and police departments need to sit down and somehow get our heads together on a case where, who knows? I don't know where the coronavirus is going, and you do. Without a plan, then I was caught with my pants down around my ankles at one time on a virus that hit this community, and I certainly want to be caught with a second time. I think we need to know if it is, and what do, what's our plan of action?
Well, actually, it's Monday morning, we're meeting at the Health Department, already in the start of that process. So we're already on top of that, we're starting to work. I've also sit on the District Nine Healthcare Coalition as a voting member of their executive board. I have been attending every CDC phone-in since this has started. We already are working that, so.
It's in the loop.
This is where, this is where.
Yeah, that's what I'm getting ready to say, the commissioners need to be involved in this also.
Well, until we get to a point that we know what to tell the commissioners, there's no reason in getting them there.
I just know that, again, 2015, when the phones started ringing and all, and, you know, and I don't want to be behind any follow-up, I don't want to be reacting, I want to be proactive.
I'll give you some of the clinical data right now as it stands. Your normal flu is killing more people still than the coronavirus, and that there's a lot of worry that this is just media finding something in right now. Now, with that being said, we are still going to take it serious. We are not going to have our colleagues out or, we're going to be in front of the A-ball.
Again, I don't know, you may be more separate, but I think you could probably ask the people in the state of Washington, pass away, and they.
I agree with you.
And that's, yeah, that's what I've got to say about that.
I did tell some jail about it.
Yeah. And they're really your lead. Well, they're really the lead agency, until it becomes a disaster, your Health Department is your lead agency on that. They are doing a lot with it, and they have done a lot of good things. So I'm here to support them in my way.
Good, so you have to go up there and, then, I had heard that, so. All right, we've got a couple of leave of absence here.
You guys, how we doing on it?
Still waiting on them and TNR, or tree folks to get out there and mark them. As soon as, as soon as marked, we're just getting ready to run into brown bat season.
He said he had another one last week, say another one dropped over his property. So he wanted to know where we are.
We're, we're waiting on.
I mean, you have a guess, don't you?
I need a warrant, once I get a warrant. No, I, that's writing on the new extension person, and.
So once it's marked, how long you find it?
I could have it done in a couple of weeks once it's marked. It's just getting it set up and putting it on and getting the volunteers here. But, yeah, the problem is, is that April 1st, you can't drop a tree and save the damn. Brown bats.
His concern was he was going to start putting them down.
So logging stops.
Yes, it has to be on the ground. That's why I've been working on this diligently.
April 1st till when?
I believe September 31st.
Are you kidding?
No, it's, it's all summer and fall. If you receive federal estate, but, yes. Yes, that's correct, that is stipulation, that if you're receiving state or federal funding on that project, it is applicable to the end of that, yes, sir. Everything has to be dropped by.
I don't say I refer, I know a lot of lawyers. Break a lot of rules, and, but it wasn't, it may not be state law, but they would.
So if we have to, we cut through half of them and put it on the ground, but count.
Yeah, I think we'd be, I think, if we can.
Yeah, I'll be.
If we get that marked, I think it's a big, 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 more. All right, and again, this is through the EMA side here, and Scott County Communications here. You're requesting a MMLA extension.
Yes.
For, where do you want it, with complications for surgery in the beginning of the, right?
Yes, sir.
So I definitely want to. Is open here, or do you ask, are you okay with it? I think that.
She's good, fully, I mean, I personally feel that there's a reason I'm here to protect her, make sure that this is what's done right by her.
Isn't that a federal?
No, the extension is up to you, because she is at a 12-week max.
This is a leave by absence.
All right, do you have your motion to allow the leave of absence? Second, I'll make that unanimous, and which are the best?
Well, and I'm going to stick around, Andrew has to apologize, he had an emergency just come up, so he was next on the agenda, and he's briefed me on what needs to be done, so.
Okay.
I'll just stay up here, if that's all right with you.
Good, grew up next, better, good, Michael's agreement.
So the agreement to agreement are for the auditor's office, the detective findings approved, and.
I have the money in my aside fund, it's set up a long time ago, and it's been sitting there, and we need a new printer. But our maintenance agreement on the Lexmark we have right now is much more expensive a month than what's going to be on the new one that I can just buy straight out. So if there's no relief, leasing anything, it's just the maintenance. Since it's a new machine, it's a lot more cost effective to do the, where they level out our expenses every month on it. And so Andrew is going to coordinate with me, and I have money in my budget to cover the maintenance, because it's less than what I'm making for the other, and I'm buying the machine straight out, so there's no.
All right, do you have your motion to allow her to enter into that agreement on the new one, correct?
And whenever we, if you approve this, then whenever we get it, we'll just use your stamp, if that's okay, and sign it, when the paperwork.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you.
Motion made, second?
Yeah.
We make it then. Or down security.
Yeah, I wasn't going to do that past January 1st. There's a couple spots that have been noticed that did not get two more cameras. There's one inside the courtroom. I personally, when originally did this, didn't know that they wanted cameras in the courtroom, I didn't think they could have. But apparently they can.
And did not.
Record audio. So there's one there, and then the hallway interrogation is a blind spot. So it just would allow us to fill in those last two spots and handle it, and hopefully, I don't have to bother here on the ballot, because.
But then, yeah.
They're going to have it, yes.
Do you need a motion?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion.
Yes, sir.
Are these the cameras out, draft signs?
Batteries, speaking of that, since we're on, the batteries for the lifts are coming in, so we can actually get, use the lifts that we own, rather than.
And actually, we're taking it out to Hawkins, because they certify all that machinery. And since we got it from the military, I'm sure it hasn't, I mean, I'm sure it was certified through them, but it probably hasn't been in a while, so he's just going to do a whole, full service on it, so we know it's in good working condition and everything else. Plus, we just got a scissor lift for the jail finally, so.
So we have to worry yet, slowly or surely, because trust me, I don't want to sit in my office any longer.
All right, and next up is the building inspector vehicle, a little vehicle request. Hi, Marty.
Ben Hedy, of course, has started his job, and he's working very hard to get his certification right now. He's trying to do a lot of that over the computer, and, but he has discovered, because we have so much water in the ground, that he would like to have a county-owned vehicle to use during his inspections. He's got a couple of contractors that don't believe in developing any sort of a driveway, and so they're just about done.
Understood, and I, I think so. Mr. Jones, we've discussed this up before, that if we got a set of those there, and they should be utilized, and I think at that point, even lots with magnetic signs on the side or whatever.
Right.
I think if we, if they're setting up any new, I don't have a problem with that. I think if we, if they're setting up any new, I don't have a problem with that. My thought, what about you?
I think you ought to have a lift.
He's, yeah, full, full vehicle, right.
And, so, because we're already, like I say, we're already set up there, and there's something that we can utilize, I think. We probably ought to have some corner radio line.
We could just go to Florida, but I mean, something would be all important to be.
You know, and I guess, maybe Greg, you can invite Anthony right here. Who, who actually is controlling, I guess, the pool cars right now? Is that?
The sheriff's department's the only people that have pool cars. I have a spare Trailblazer that needs a little bit of work, but I control that. It's, it depends on the department that owns the vehicle.
Okay, so it's based off the department that, right?
Right.
We have nothing, any highway that would utilize or anything like that.
Well, I'm coming up with the pool car plan or whatever, is that we have, we have several people, and, and the prosecutor has a detective or a person that, that works in their, in their agency to drive his personal vehicle around to do deposition and some other stuff and investigation. So, we got him driving every day. This guy, he's part-time, so thirty hours a week, so whatever, so he's gonna.
He's full-time.
So, he, so I understand it's full-time, but it's.
So, he, what, does inspections three days a week, is that what it is, or he doesn't?
Well, it just depends on how he can schedule.
Okay. So, anyway, there's, there's one in the prosecutor's office that needs a vehicle, there's one in your, your office that needs a vehicle, and there's probably more. This guy's probably driving his personal vehicle to Scott's Hardware and every place else around the sun. So, there's three, three that I know are off the top of my head. So, and plus, we talked about, and I reached out to Richie Cannon about this, is that we're a county official, whether it's Tammy going to a meeting or whatever, and she has a wreck in her personal vehicle, and she's got one of her office personnel there, she's the one's liable for it. I mean, the county's kind of off the hook, and, and I don't know if it's fair to people that are going to county places for our benefit and, and being involved in a wreck and having their personal lives affected by it. So, I think we ought to have, you know, whatever pool cars are out there, or, or buy some pool cars if we're doing it, or if somebody's getting ready, trade cars to buy different cars, then we take those cars, I mean, so.
His, his only concern is that he would probably need a four-wheel drive.
We're not talking tank on car, we're talking when it comes in.
Oh, no, no, he just, he would go wherever, whatever the procedure would be for him to obtain a vehicle.
Yeah. And I agree with the prosecutor, that's the only one, too. And I, you probably have too, and I've talked to the prosecutor about it, but honestly, I think he needs to come to us and tell us he wants a prosecutor. And I, I know, we've talked about it, but it's his and mine.
I understand that, but I also know that sometimes people won't ask for something when they're trying to get something else. So, I know he, his priorities are trying to get an admin, I believe, and not a, not a car, and he doesn't want the council to believe that he's asking for one, and they give him a car, and now that he doesn't have the possibility to get a car, so.
And I told him I'm in favor of it, and I assume you had too. So.
I just don't want to put the burden on, on county employees to be driving their own vehicles.
I totally agree.
So, I do think the prosecutor needs to involve them.
Another idea we had, and we're looking, okay, to switch the topic just a little bit. We're trying to make sure that he's more easily identifiable, so we're going to try and get him a couple of shirts, and he likes to wear ball caps all the time, so we're going with ball caps.
That's fine.
Okay. And, so, we're getting pricing on, on those items, too, just, and the magnetic sign that he can put on the pool car, too, whenever he drives around.
Okay.
Green.
That is?
You have to vote on top of your card.
Sure.
First of all, I think we need to know who's got cars. I know the corrections department has a blue in file. Greg, are you using yours, or are you?
I'm using the twenty-five hundred.
I'm talking about the Trailblazer.
The Trailblazer, I need to get down to Jill, the power steering pump, they worked on it once, but it's still not holding fluid, they were trying. So, once it's down to Jill, and her people want to build stickers on the side, it can be used by whomever.
So, there's your four-wheel.
Sorry, Jill.
Is that, is that a four-wheel drive?
It is a four-wheel drive, and it's, I wouldn't take it to Indianapolis or Detroit, but I would drive it around the county all day long.
I think that's why you're looking at it, anyway.
Yeah.
Just when he's talking about your four-wheel.
Oh, I have no idea. All he's worried about is a four-wheel drive, because he had to go out to a, to a site today, and he said he had to go in, and it was a long drive, and then he had to back all the way out.
So, we both, you could have that vehicle in control, you're just talking about?
It would still have to be retained technically by NMA, because it was purchased by Grant, but anybody could use it. I don't have one set of tail feathers to be in a truck at one time.
Does that have lights on?
I don't really get in that vehicle.
Yes.
You know, if he can't get off the, if he can't get off into the driveway, he can turn on the lights.
Yeah, it also has a light package on it.
Can we come get that tomorrow?
Yeah.
I got a question, if, trying to work out some sort of plan here, what we could come up with, and I think we're gonna have to create a, something here, that if, if for a chance that we, we decide we're gonna have a pool car plan, I guess, or whatever, would nine-one-one be a place that we could hang keys to three or four vehicles, because you're twenty-four-seven?
Yeah, that's fine. I mean, I'll send you guys the bill, the same as I'm about to send the bill to the city for the parks department.
So, what I'm saying is, somebody could come in there twenty-four hours a day, sign a car out, and you would have, somebody would have the keys, said, here's a key, and.
Yeah, I think that makes perfect sense.
I could just order a key box and hang it up in there, kind of.
We already have them.
So, but anyway, I'm just trying to see, I think we're gonna have to come up with a, a plan of some sort, and be voted on and everything else, but I, I think there's some, whoever's gonna drive a car needs to have a valid driver's license and be able to turn their driver's license over to somebody, keep on file, so that you know that, hey, they got a, they're a valid driver. So, I think we need it sooner than later to get into the pool bit, pool, pool car business, because I think we're putting too many people at risk, so.
I did have an idea that popped into my head, and when we look into these magnetic signs, would it be better to have a sign that just said, I don't know, official Scott County Vehicle, or, or something like that, instead of identifying, you know, and keeping our signs.
Official Scott County cars.
I don't know, you know, something like that, so that others could use it.
Whatever the insurance, I think would probably.
Well, signs aren't, eventually, I mean, you can buy two for each side for, that's a hundred dollars. I mean, that's, I don't know what, you're saying might move them around to be.
Yeah.
I, I don't know.
That's me, but.
It's probably cheaper to do the signs than it is to have vinyl applied.
Yeah, yeah. And he could, yeah, take them off at night, actually, when they're in your vehicles, we might strip them off and tear them up.
Well, if you take it under legal advisement, come up with a plan.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you, brother.
It's under advisement.
What we find out, they're all.
I gotta leave tomorrow, it's about the commissioner's lawsuit, someone else's policy or something, what they're, maybe you should send me what they got.
And I thought, I didn't, we got, I'll find one tomorrow before Dallas.
I think the problem they're running into is making sure that we have valid drivers in that.
You make companies everybody's driver's license in the auditor's office when they're hiring. But, the thing is, we probably need to get a list to nine-one-one who's authorized to show their license and sign a car out.
The other thing is, I don't know.
But, again, I mean, I mean, I know we do that, again, take them, how many times do we ever, I mean, we ever go back and see if they, license run out, did we, did they not hold them, that kind of thing?
See, that's just like, that's exactly what I was saying, because, you know, you have a C L, every year you have to run an MBR, so if they want to drive a pool car, then I think they need to do the same thing. They need to have a background every year to say, you haven't had fifteen tickets, or you had, you don't have a driver's license, so, yeah, so.
All right, next up is the building superintendent resignation, and we did have a resignation from the building superintendent, Tony Leslie. He resigned the building superintendent on Friday at two-twenty-one, at four P.M. was his last day. And, so, it has been posted, the building position has been, has been posted, correct?
Yes.
And, so, at this point, we have the two applications that we got for the position. I'll open it up for, I don't know, on who you want to appoint as the building superintendent at this time. We're gonna have, if you, uh, we have to, two here, well, not one, not one here, two, so maybe not.
I'll go ahead and say my piece, so, I might as well make a, whatever. But, I believe that, firm believer that, you know, you got a county employee that's interested in promotions or, or, and take that on another job, that they ought to have at least an interview and, and, and a thought of, of, of the upcoming position. So, I guess with that, I think Josh Paul should, you know, he's in that position, in the second position there, I think he ought to be just promoted to the, to the lead maintenance superintendent, so that's my, that's my thought.
And I, and I agree with that. I had a different little option here, I thought we ought to look at, maybe we won't go anywhere with it, but I don't know what that position pays, what's it pay, your, if you go, if you take the new job, what's that pay, Josh, do you know?
Twenty-twenty-nine.
Twenty-two-nine. And then, if we go, we're going, we'll have to hire a, another one. I have doubts that we need to. I would be more for Josh, but I'd like to see, of course, this would be probably more counsel with us. I would like to do away with the second position, make it part-time, and maybe get him a little bit more of a raise. I just have, just from my observations, I don't know we need to. You may disagree with me. But, that's what I think, and also, if one less person went by insurance and all that kind of stuff, then maybe obviously I'd be part-time. We're looking at, we're not to that point yet on part-time for another person, but, just a thought, but I'm, I'm for Josh, too, also on that position. This is echo. It is, yeah. Again, I, I guess I'm third line, so I can't second that, I'm third line. You know, I, I think that Josh has done a lot of the job here, of course, and I certainly all for Josh being promoted to the superintendent's, building superintendent's position. Everything that we have ever asked of him, he has responded and done, and done well. And I certainly appreciate that, and the board appreciates that. So, with that being said, I will be entertaining the motion, and I'll, I'll make the motion, as soon as you have a second pass. I will make it unanimous that you be promoted to the building superintendent's position. And I also, I think, will rely on you, and I don't disagree with Mr. Leslie, if it's something that looks like it's, you bump you up in pay, and you be part-time to listen, that's what I think would be coming from you, as the, as the building superintendent and the department head. I think you need to come back and say, hey, this is what I think I need. Then at that point, I think we'd be going to the council and see if, but I, I think that would all come under probably more than what we need here tonight, so.
Yeah, the only thing I would say with that is there's, we have nine buildings.
Yes.
In the county, and if we're getting ready to add a couple more areas, then we're, we're gonna be ten-plus buildings for one guy in a part-time, it's gonna be rough. It's rough now, I mean, don't get me wrong, I've done it. I've, I've been doing all the building by myself anyways, I just didn't do the paperwork. But, now I'm gonna be adding paperwork to that.
Sure.
So, there, there is gonna be, there is gonna be some.
I think it's gonna be your fault, so.
It's gonna be some trickiness to it, but.
But, one thing I want you to do as superintendent, is take those caution tape down off the doors.
And I'm gonna, I'm gonna track that up quick.
I would say the only reason, I didn't put those up, the only reason that those were up is because people went out about six times a day.
Go buy two, two poles.
I know, and chain.
And, and.
Run, run or whatever, and. Looks like crime scene from outside.
I'll, I'll just be honest, if that happens tomorrow, typically, then, I'm not trying to tell you what to do on the first day.
Tomorrow?
But if I.
Hey, I'll do today. Mr. Page, Bill will go up as of now.
Uh, if Page, yes, will go up, and.
Tomorrow morning.
Tomorrow morning.
So, if he may get with you and.
He just, I'll tell Trinity, and he'll turn these sign cards.
Yeah, if you get the signs down, you start tomorrow.
No signs, just take that page. Kind of looks like Halloween, you drive by and it looks like Halloween there.
Somebody else did mention this to me, is that, I, I think there's some signs outside someplace that just has arrows. Can we get with somebody that makes signs and puts something that says that main entrance or the entrance is on the east side of the building, so that somebody doesn't, somebody said there's some elderly people that were walking, I'm not talking about you, but there's people that said, they just didn't know where the arrow was leading, so.
I think you found the building you're talking about.
Yeah, we can, yeah, we can figure out where.
I don't know where those are.
The problem with putting those, the sheriff's department wanted to put those on there, but, because they were going up to every door and pulling on the door.
But if you say.
And they were still pulling up on the.
But if you give them direction before they get to that door.
Right. But, we just gotta figure out where to put it. So, the people, because if they come from the side, and you put it in the main side of the coming up, they still don't, they don't read them. That's like the sign with the windows. People still come up with knives.
Oh, man, can you hold this?
Well, they will.
Say it.
Well, they have. But, I, but, yeah, I, yeah.
Anyway, we need to get some better signs, so, so these people aren't lost, or getting better communication, so, that's all.
We still need this transport vehicle sign out here. And I'm, I didn't know that the transport are coming to Billy Door, am I right?
No. Tramp, the, the.
Train, train.
The sherries, the sherries, all the train. No, they come, they, they come in the front door.
Okay, that's what, but I mean, they need, they're not parking over here, though, are they?
Yeah.
They are, and they walk.
Nobody parks in that thing, and they just walk straight side along, yeah.
All right, I'm just trying to freeze patients, okay.
Yeah. And that was done, I think, when Kenny was here.
Yeah, I know it's been there a while, but I thought if they come in a different door, it'd be logical to park closer to the door, but if they're using it, that's fine.
You've done enough.
All right, next up is the consideration of minutes for the February fifth, twenty-twenty meeting. Chair, chairman, implement.
I'll make a motion to accept.
Motion made to accept the minutes from the twenty-twenty, February fifth meeting.
Second.
Make it unanimous. Payroll dock ratification for February twenty-eight, twenty-twenty.
I'll make a motion to accept that.
That's, this here is just for payroll here, with second.
Second.
And the next one is the blank approval for the twenty-twenty claims of murder trials. And what we got going on here, and I'm kind of tanning, he needs to sign it, tanning here. But, anyway, there is a couple trial, I think trials come this year, and one starting Monday, and we need to, basically, I think we have a approval for auditor to pay these fines, some of them, required, there's special circumstances that some of them will have to be paid per day that they, I think.
We've got, it says, being flown in, often having open-ended round trip airline tickets they're holding spots for. We've got a letter here from the Kentucky Medical, or, no, from Chris Owens, from the Kentucky Medical Examiner's Office, that fees are due and owing to the Kentucky State's Treasurer upon services rendered and her departure from the court as soon as. the Kentucky State's Treasurer upon services rendered and her departure from the court. As soon as they testify and come downstairs, they're wanting a check cut. So we've got some very out-of-order situations, and it, and there could be two murder trials this year, so if I can get blanket approval to work with the prosecutor's office, and pay those through either their terms or the urgent claims on Fridays, it won't be extended past the twenty twenty murder trials, and won't be any other situation in those two. So if you guys will give me that, we can work with them and get these bills paid as they, evidently, very, very quickly, we need them.
I'll make a motion to, to, that authority to write a check.
Motion made, I hear a second, you do. I'll make it unanimous.
Bob, did you want to do the monthly claims?
Oh, we're not, I haven't done that yet. Maybe I jumped over that, but just give you one monthly claims here.
Sorry, I'll make a motion.
Motion made to accept, second.
So you're talking about that murder trial. Just needs a hundred and fifty seating arrangement up in the courtroom Friday by Monday. And I don't think we have enough chairs to sit this, besides the benches to set up in there. Do you guys have any idea where we can find some?
Why is there a set number?
Because that's how, I guess that's the juror, that, that.
Well, that's, that's a pool there.
Well, they would all be there at that first thing in the morning, but, yeah, yeah.
Well, I ask a simple question, can we contact one of the schools and say, can we borrow some chairs?
I guess we could. Fire for them, to have chairs?
Well, we've got some, we've got so many, but I mean, if you're, you leave, the school's got, the school's got them on a cart.
What about, what do you, you mentioned benches, what do you, what do you say?
The benches are up there in the courtroom now.
Yes.
But we need seating for a hundred and fifty people.
How many, how many of them will sit in that courtroom right now, do you know?
It seems to think I need about sixty more up there.
First of all, you better check fire marshal and see if you can.
And then I gotta add chairs to the juror, the jury room, because the school is sitting in there.
Josh, did you get the chairs out of the E O C?
Uh, yeah, but that's not including them.
I know, that one's over at nine one one.
Yeah, that's including all them.
I called school, they got them on a cart, you roll up there and take them apart.
Okay.
That's what I do.
You better check and see what the capacity of that room has.
All right, we've got some, some other claims here that, that you get on the claims documents here, and we have claims through the Indiana Department of Corrections. It's a J D A, J grant, I grant, for eight thousand, eight hundred and eleven dollars and seventy-eight cents. We have a, another one to the Indiana Department of Corrections, J D A I grant, again, that's in about two thousand one hundred and eighty-six dollars and ninety-two cents.
It gives the funds to be returned to them because the grant term is over, and this was unextended, and they require money to be sent back.
Okay.
The sheriff's office, what is it?
This is through the Circuit Court, and it's a partnership with the Scott County Partnership, where we have a county sponsorship come out, the Life Spring Grant, and we're in the middle. And their partnership is going for services, Circuit Court is the sponsor, i.e. the county, and this is, services that the partnership's providing, and bill J D A I. Circuit Court buys the claims, we pay them, and this is money that was not expended from the partnership services.
Okay, and do I need to sign these too? I've got this with Jason to sign it, and you?
Sign under, here are the originals, I need you to sign these, Bob.
Okay.
Here, and just sign underneath, me.
I'll make a motion to.
Sign these too?
To sign.
And, second. And then we have a couple more here, that's in Tanneken. We, I mean, here is, one is, is the Association of Indiana Counties. This is a twenty twenty membership that's due, and that's one thousand four hundred and twenty-seven dollars and fifty-eight cents. And we also have one to I S U Insurance Group. This is the twenty thirteen nineteen twenty audit, a final audit, and that's in about five thousand eight hundred and twenty-one dollars. I hear about it, so.
On the final audit, what, what exactly is that payment?
Is that the?
Vehicle inventory, and if it changes from anticipating premium, you're ending one year, what we paid, I gave you detail on that one in your packet, where the other ones I just gave, cover sheets. You can see that they anticipated that we would on that, if you look at the third page, that we had a premium of seventy-two, five seventy-two, and then additional premium due was the fifty-eight twenty-one, because when they did a final count at the end of nineteen, our premium, we had more autos in the blanket policy. They anticipated that we would have in the blanket policy. This is.
Faults in blanket policy, dude.
The blanket policy gives you coverage for so many vehicles, but once you exceed the limit from the year before, then your blanket policy is on more vehicles. You, you have immediate coverage, right, if you own a hundred vehicles.
Kind of like this list?
That list. So that is, then, no matter if you have, buy ten cars, or fifteen cars during the year, they're gonna cover you immediately, but when they do, you're ending your auto. Then you're going on a hundred vehicles.
So they're guaranteed a price to a certain amount, vehicles, registration.
Then they go back and they do an inventory, if you exceeded that, they bill you the difference, because they covered your vehicle the whole year.
So I guess by us having additional vehicles, we're getting billed fifty-eight hundred dollars more.
Well, and that, that's kind of what I'm looking at here, but, but, so, so that I understand this correctly, our, our premium was going to be seventy-two, and I'm sorry to be polite, I'm having a hard time here today. Seventy-two thousand, five hundred and seventy-two dollars, and because we didn't go over the limit, fourth, we would have sold some cars, would it went down? Would it went down five thousand?
In that same inventory period, it should have gone.
It should have went down the same. So if we would have went down, if we would have rid as many cars that we might have collected, it would have dropped five thousand dollars.
I think, or the black line.
I guess the question about that is, when does, when do they do the audit?
End of the year.
So, so in December, they would do an audit for that calendar year?
They come to our department now.
Okay, well, I mean, I'm just asking, so before having an auction.
We need to have it before December.
When we get rid of something, we, we email the insurance company and say, this is gone, quit insurance.
And last fall, we checked. We went to every department to check to make sure that what we had, the I S U had, because we didn't want I S U carrying things that had not been canceled. But we got an after account at the cash, and that's when I gave you that list.
So that list is accurate?
It was accurate as of, basically, you said, we heard first, I don't know, since this year. We haven't done an inventory again. Because I want to know what I S U was gonna bill us.
Okay. All right, still, what is the name of the, you know, payer of art? I think we need to.
I'll make a motion to pay it up. I think we need to watch, we need to, we need to know what the cutoff is, so that we can say, I'd hate to get billed more for one car.
And if we get, or if we buy five more this year, is it gonna walk the number? I mean, I don't know, again, I don't know the per.
Well, also, if we got a car that's junk, we don't even be putting a tag on it, we need to take a tag off and say it's junk, I mean, and take it off our books.
Is that blanket number per department, or per county?
Is, is the county, and then I S U goes back and gives us a breakdown between departments on everything, on that one.
My phone's original, but he's worried about liability and, and this.
Well, I guess, I guess, I've got a question there too.
But we budget so much, and then if we don't have any additional appropriation room, that's where council is gonna go, oh, hey, we're, you know, well, I probably may need to find this money somewhere.
I think we need to get rid of some cars.
I did too, I think, I'm familiar right now, but another question I've got here, maybe you can answer, if we can, if we can find out. I know some of the vehicles that we obtained, I think, and probably most of them is, I think, in the sheriff's department, is through the military side. I think we have some armored vehicles, SWAT-type vehicles over there, that can be used.
Free.
I know they're free, but I, but what I'm saying is, is I don't think they're vehicles we can ever own, not the ones that are armors.
They're almost ready for us to own them, I think, because it's three years or something, then you can title them.
Well, I think you can, the, exactly, the Hummers and the pickup trucks, but the ones, but the ones that, the one I'm talking about is, is like a SWAT-type vehicle, armored-type vehicle, it's specifically for military or sheriff, or police departments, and at that point, if it's, you know, if they don't decide they don't want it, they have to either give that back, I think, and I.
Those didn't come from D R M O, those come from Michigan State Police. So they're on a different type of inventory program, so we can't own those.
We can own.
The water ones?
Yeah, they came from Michigan State Police originally.
The ones that we went got?
Yeah.
They were through a military base, through L E S O.
Yeah, but they were pulled from Michigan, and Michigan didn't want them, Michigan gave them back.
I want to see paperwork on that, because the signatures that we have are all from the L E S O program, to retrieve those.
Yeah, just, you can't get a black one in the military, that's what I'm saying. They're not, they're, they're paying, they were done someplace else.
What were you visiting down?
Pay it, I mean, I'm.
Motion made, pay them two claims, say it. You're unanimous.
And I would like to know what the, what the.
I'm missing information.
Is it, is it a hundred and less, or a hundred and more?
Let me see again on that. I'll try to figure out the cutoffs, so what ranges where we're getting the premium.
He dumped her.
Yes, you're not losing any, you're gaining.
All right, so we got that taken care of, other claims, we done this, I guess, we got it all, and then now we're up on the.
Baker Tilly.
Hold on here, Ellen, how could that possibly be, that we are right on track here?
I know.
Agreement.
I just texted my husband, I was like, oh, I'm good, but.
It ain't over yet. Agreement with the Baker Tilly for annual continuing services.
All I can do is give you a cover letter. This is the one that we need, because we do have bond debt. You just got a cover letter from Baker Tilly in your packet. And this is a customary disclosure agreement that I need every year from you guys, so Baker Tilly can be paid for disclosing the information on the bonds that we have at the county. And they've done this for years. This is just the annual agreement.
Re-legalizing.
Yes.
Is there any cost involved there? I'm sure there is.
Yes, it is, and it's.
But they're bringing it.
Yes, and it's based on hourly rates, so.
And that's through your budget, right?
Um, either, depends on, there's A T A bonds, and there's also the jail bonds, but either coit, or I believe that the special lip for the jail will pay for this, for that part, and the redevelopment pays for the other.
Sure, they're going on it now, if that would use them with that.
They will bill us for how much time it took for them to prepare this report. So, I mean, they, they can't give me a five dollar amount, because some bonds obviously are long, and you couldn't.
But it's added, needed.
But it's, and this is once a year, we do this, and it, and we have to do this. We just, it depends on if you want to contract with Baker Tilly to do this or not.
Or somebody else.
All right, now here are motions to contract with Baker Tilly for the annual services.
Yes.
Second. You're unanimous. Last. And maybe you're gonna need that back too. F M L A, I got a sign that's, F M L A request.
Need a motion?
Uh, yes. Motion made to allow the three F M L A request, second.
Second.
You're unanimous.
I'll stay.
I could go something.
Yeah, before you adjourn.
Okay.
I just want to make a statement about Josh, wish he was still here, he's starting job tomorrow, just didn't want him to think he'd come in, sit down with council, and say, I'd be willing to do what you guys said with part-time employee, his job would still have to be classified with our H R firm, so, I just didn't want him to think he'd come in next meeting and say, yeah, I'd be willing to do that, and it'd just be automatic.
We'll pass, we'll pass.
So we tried, we tried to treat everybody the same.
One thing, one thing that we did not do, and maybe I, I think we should, before the building superintendent had the vehicle to drive, which was the, I think that Dodge pickup truck, is that right?
Chevy.
Chevy pickup truck, whatever it was, I think that's certainly, you should pick it up and be able to drive it, don't you, are you guys agreeable with that? So I think we didn't tell him that, but I think.
Outside of.
Outside, now, usually sits around here, but.
Before that, I'm taking home, or is that just maybe a little?
I, I.
It stayed here.
It stayed here, and then they come, yeah.
That's what I think he'd do.
Of course, he used to walk. He used to walk.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Well, I just want to know where, where I would have taken home.
Yeah, and it, it was, but, but it was strictly for him, I think, to use here, building maintenance, because they haul and stuff, and so, yeah, he would be allowed to continue to have that. All right, anything on your part, Peter?
What was, what was that?
Anything on your part?
Uh, just mainly about that, getting that tape down.
He's out there right now, he said, he is.
Wouldn't see that. I think that's, Lloyd, I think that's all. I just want to make sure we get the tape down.
You're not on the agenda, I don't think, tonight. Is there anything on behalf, your behalf of you?
They're, they're gonna start paving, we'll have a Facebook post Friday or Monday, they're actually gonna go ahead and start crossing paving this month. So we're gonna get some culverts installed, and they'll spit a little Facebook post, it's four roads, I think, and I'll tell you the dates based on weather.
To, I'm about to throw the little bridge, if I did want a first little paving.
We'll, yeah, we'll get, we'll get you.
Anything on your behalf?
I think you have two things. First thing is, tomorrow afternoon, beginning at two o'clock, we're having a little open reception thing, right, in the business day, for Teresa Van Oosthout, she's taken a position with the City of Scottsboro, so she will be intermittent for a little while, she's got a vacation on schedule, she's gonna get out, of course, she's heads over, across the street. Denise McLean, she left one, she's going to number two. Yeah, so anyways, I have to get her just a little bit, but, but anyway, so we're, we're having a get together, so there'll be some food and non-alcoholic refreshments, non-patient, if you guys want to do it after, well, you want a hearty for some of that work. So, and also, you've been invited by email, I was asked by the jail commander yesterday to send out an email really quick to commissioners and council, and at four thirty tomorrow afternoon, once you come over here and have something eat, you're welcome to walk across the street, and he's gonna, somebody's gonna give you a tour of the jail, if you, if anybody's interested, so.
All right, sounds super. I'll add a motion, to adjourn.
Motion.
Second. Thank you all for coming, we're out of here.